I call this May 15th meeting of the Paducah Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I want to welcome all of you and invite you to stand with us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Summer Cutharall, please.
Mr. Benbury?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Ms. Schramke?
Here.
Mr. Shadle?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Chair Casillas?
Here. Glad to have everyone here tonight. Mr. Morrison, I believe you have the minutes motion, please.
Yes, ma'am. I move that the reading of the minutes for May 1st, 2017 be waived and that the minutes of said meeting as prepared by the secretary be approved as written.
Second?
Second by Benbury. Are there any corrections, changes? Cutharall, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye. Mr. Shadle, you have two motions. The first one to remove an item of business from the table.
Yes. I move that amendment to the development plan located at 3201 Oliver Church Road, Suite 5, be removed from the table.
Second?
Second by Schramke. This is an item of business that was at our last meeting, however, there was not anyone here for us to ask some questions, and so we decided to table the motion until tonight. Is there anyone here to speak to us?
Mr. Walker, the sign contractor was informed of the meeting, but I do not see him. However, I have added information in here that I'm hoping can clear your questions up from last time.
We probably need to vote on this. To vote on the motion to remove the table.
We still need to vote on whether we're going to remove it or not.
Right, that's what I'm just going to say.
That's fine. The option is we can leave it on the table until our next meeting, which would be a no vote. Or if you would like to remove it from the table and go ahead and hear tonight the information, then you would vote yes. Cutharall, please.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye. Now, would you read the motion?
Surely. I move that a resolution entitled, a resolution constituting the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed amendment to a development plan located at 3201 Oliver Church Road, Suite 5, be adopted.
Second by Benbury. Actually, this motion was already presented and seconded at our last meeting, so we didn't really need a second. That's right. Now, we have heard the motion again, know what it is.
Thank you. At the last meeting, the commission had some questions about the graphics on the door. That is a total of 3.96 square feet, added on to the 47.32 square feet above the door, which will be internally lit for that sign. The total sign square footage for that facade is 51.28 square feet, and that's still below the 20% threshold of 96.66 square feet. And there's no light dividers on that door. I went by Thursday to take a look, and they had removed those light dividers. It's just two solid panes of glass.
Okay, so they are still going to have the attached, what do you call it?
The graphics are going to be on the outside, it looks like.
Mm-hmm, okay. And those will be permanent?
Yes.
Anyone have any more questions? Cutharall, please.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye. Mr. Wade, you have the Aaron Feather and Gary and Janet Freeman public hearing.
Yes, I move that a resolution entitled, a resolution constituting the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed closing of an alley off Ohio Street between South 11th and South 12th Street be adopted.
Second?
Second by Shadle.
This is a portion of an alley that is undeveloped, and the joining landowners have, they have petitioned the city to close this. We surveyed it and divided it evenly.
So it'll be divided evenly amongst the joining landowners?
Another point to speak on is that the alley is to remain as a public utility easement or with, because it's used to tell public lines.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? This is a public hearing, and so we welcome anyone else who might have any comments. Having none, Cutharall, please.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye. Ms. Schramke, you have the Bradley and Susan Brown and Donna Hardy public hearing for another alley closing.
I do. I move that a resolution entitled, a resolution constituting the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed closing of an alley between 2054 and 2062 Broad Street be adopted.
Second?
Second by Morrison.
As you can see, the Browns already have a building in the alley, and they're already using this alley and have been for quite some time. So this is an alley that's unimproved. We are leaving the rest of the alley open. It's just between where the Browns are and Ms. Hardy. Ms. Hardy is actually going to convey all her interests to the Browns, so she won't be getting anything. The rest of the alley doesn't really help. It runs straight into Island Creek. It's in the flood zone, and it can't be improved anyway. But we're only closing the part next to the Browns. That's all they're asking for.
And there are no utilities in this?
None.
You say you're only closing the portion of the alley?
Next to them.
So there will be another strip that's still technically dedicated?
The 15-foot alley you see is behind them, and then also down below them.
Okay, it extends beyond their property.
Yeah, it still could be used and developed, but I can't see it happening because it, in other words, all that area down there is in a flood zone and runs straight into Island Creek.
Yeah. Is there going to be a property line established in the middle of the 15-foot easement?
No, it's just a 15-foot alley that was originally planted with all these lots years and years ago. It's just never been improved. It's never been used, except by the owner.
I guess I'm just anticipating if there's going to be a future waiver of subdivision.
There will be, yes.
That was the same concerns I have, is how we were going to do a one-two punch, because obviously you already have an encroachment on city alleyway, but then you're going to have a sideline issue, it would seem, but by what you've just said, it's all going to resolve itself.
Right. We will be abolishing that line next to the Browns, and they will be encompassing the entire 15-foot, and then we'll abolish that line, of course, that makes it all one track. So that way, they'll meet the standards for the building setback, as well as it'll just all be their property. Ms. Hardy's not going to get any of it. She doesn't care about it.
Questions or comments?
She didn't even know there was an alley there, so that's how that goes.
Someone didn't know if they built a garage there, whatever the...
Or didn't care, one of the others.
Just for clarification, the fence line that's there, is that along the edge of the alley, or?
Not for sure. I can't remember that. Can't really ask that. I can't answer that.
Because the way the fence on one side and the trees on the other, it looks, and the way the picture was taken, maybe the alley runs right between those two, but...
It didn't run along the property line, of course, because the block buildings right there, and they're, I mean, they use that, they go into it, but not really for sure exactly where that fence is. They've also had a trampoline in it as well.
The Browns and the Hardys, are they both applicants on this?
Yes, and they both signed.
And they've both been joint to it, okay.
Any other comments? Cutharall, please.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye. Mr. Shadle, you have the waiver of parking requirement for 5015 Hinkleville Road?
Yes. I move that this commission receive and file the application of 5015 Hinkleville Road LLC for approval to waive nine parking places at 5011 and 5015 Hinkleville Road pursuant to Section 126.7 B2 of the Paducah zoning coordinates. A further move that this commission find the waiver of nine parking spaces, nine parking stalls, so it has no negative impact on the property, and the tenants of the multi-tenant building have reviewed the site plan and are in agreement that the site plan, as proposed, will meet their operational needs, and a total of 100 parking spaces are being provided on the site. And the planning commission has the approval to waive the parking requirements at 5011 and 5015 Hinkleville Road. A further move the application be approved.
Second. Second. Second by Schramke.
A little bit of background on this, as you all may remember, at the last meeting, it was denied for 23. We have received a new site plan, which you all have, where some of the stalls were reduced in size to get 100 on the site. And one of the occupants, their interior seating was actually reduced, so that cut down on the parking calculations as well. So this request is for nine spaces, and Mr. Dahman and Mr. Goff is here to answer any other questions that you all may have.
We got everything but Starbucks. Their information in terms of the parking?
They have a different classification of restaurants where the parking requirements are based on square footage of dining area and not on number of seats. So how many of the seats from the last proposal, the differential between the size of the parking stalls and how many for the change in the layout of the restaurant? I don't recall exactly how many seats were shown that were provided on the last site plan. Essentially, now there will be 20 for the westernmost tenant, eight for the center tenant, and 30 for the easternmost tenant. I know the eastern and western tenants were reduced. They both had a reduction in outdoor seating.
We had 90 spaces onsite total, so we gained 10.
Now, you reduced the size. Did you go to 9-foot instead of 10-foot spaces?
Correct, yes.
And the big discussion last time, of course, was the parking across the street for the employees. That will not happen.
That will not happen, no.
Employees will not be asked to park over there. There's...
We understand there's safety concerns with that, and because we can't put in a stop sign, it really, it's not feasible to do that, so... One thing I'd like to add, the outdoor seating is what's truly driving the total number of parking stalls required for the project. I fully understand that there's a good portion of the year, or at least maybe half the year, that they will be used, but on the contrary, there's half the year that they won't be used, so, you know, in my mind, or our mind, as a developer, you know, nine stalls, granted, it's nine stalls, but it's a minor number in the overall scheme of things, knowing that a good chunk of the year they won't be required.
So therefore, there was also discussion, I just really want to clear this part, there was also discussion about borrowing or making arrangements with neighbors as far as parking, so that would not be...
That would not be part of it either. We've had some preliminary discussions with neighboring property owners. You know, they're not really keen on the idea of doing that at this point. You know, if push came to shove, it may happen, but we can't guarantee that at this point, so that's why we're coming in, keeping all the parking on our property and asking the variance of nine stalls. Josh, are all three of these restaurants that have written letters classified as quick service or sit-down?
Sit-down.
Sit-down.
They're all classified as sit-down?
Yes.
Which...
Starbucks is the one that's qualifying as quick service.
Which, do other cities have an additional category of restaurants that would be somewhere between sit-down and quick service?
Not that I've seen. The research, and specifically the research I did on parking calculations, most cities either have one classification for restaurant, or if they do break it down, it's between quick service and sit-down.
Yeah. Because just based on personal familiarity with these restaurants, I wouldn't classify any of them as true sit-down restaurants in the sense that they, the people that go to them have to be present to eat, and in fact, with all three of these, most of the people actually get their food and go, so I feel okay with waiving the parking requirements based on that alone.
Well, and I think you have gone, you've done some of the things that we asked you to do at the last meeting, and so I think that's admirable. Are there any of the comments, questions? Cutharall, please.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye. Thank you for being here.
Mr. Bradford, you have the Bobby and Stella Barnes waiver of subdivision.
I move that this commission receive and file the application of Bobby and Stella Barnes for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 415 and 417 North 4th Street. I further move that the requested approval be given and compliance with all other applicable provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
Second. Second by Schramke.
This is just to abolish one interior property line. The applicants wish to build a single-family home in the future. Rick, can I add anything you like?
It doesn't get any simpler than this one.
It's pretty simple. I don't see even anything running through the property that would create any kind of a problem.
Yeah, that's correct.
Any comments, questions? Cutharall, please.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury, you have the Rick Collier and Tammy Cotton?
I move that this commission receive and file the application of Rick Collier and Tammy Cotton for a proposed re-subdivision of the property located at 801, 803, 805, South 3rd Street. I further move that the requested approval be given and compliance with all other provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
Second?
Second by Shadle.
This is to abolish one interior property line as well on South 3rd for a future small business. Mike, feel free to add anything if you'd like.
It's about as simple as probably Rick was.
Pretty much. Any questions or comments? Cutharall, please.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye.
I believe that concludes all of our business that we have. We have a discussion that we want to pursue. And I've provided all of you with a copy of this. The mayor asked Josh to put this together. He's done some good research for us. So if you all, I hope you've taken a look at it in advance, because I did provide that to you via email.
Josh, what I would go into, making changes in our parking regulations as far as from, I know that this commission has authority to propose that, and then the planning department could draft new regulations and bring them to us to approve, and then beyond that, they would go to the city commission, is that right?
Yes. By the KRS, it does have to be referred to the planning commission regardless of where it comes from. It would just be a text amendment, but after approval from you all, it would go to the city commission.
How does it work for retroactive, I mean, I've always wanted to expand my business, but I have too many parking places now. I don't have to have them. Can I expand my business now? Is that...
Potentially, yes.
So we could end up with...
Or sell off a lot, or, it depends on how much excess parking that they have and what sort of business it is. But they can definitely reduce to the minimum number if they want to sell off excess property or expand their business.
Well, it's interesting you should say that, because Mr. Bradford had some information about something that potentially in the future we could discuss, and that is that you could, in reverse, not sell off, but buy a waiver for a certain number of parking spaces, that could be used to maintain public parking, which is certainly an interesting idea. But it would be something that, of course, we wouldn't be deciding tonight, but something we could consider, certainly as part of any changes that we wanted to make to the ordinance as part of the comprehensive plan. I do know, and I'm sure you do too, that we're at our five-year limit, and so this year, we'll be reviewing the comprehensive plan. What I'd like to do is for us to take sections at a time, and us to have some public hearings where people can come in and give their input. I think that that's part of what's been missing in the past, is that we haven't, we've had, like, a public hearing on the entire plan, but not input from people on various sections of the plan. And I think that's really important. It's important for us to all hear that information, and it's important for the public to have the opportunity to present their ideas as well, because this is an ordinance that regulates everyone in the city. So I think we will get into that process eventually. Right now, I know they're advertising for a new planning director, and so we'll probably wait until there's a new planning director selected.
Yeah, I can give a little bit of insight on what the discussion's been up to this point. We had planned to bring in this to the planning commission in two weeks to re-adopt. What we have is, we do have some funding set aside for a new plan, a complete rewrite, if you will. That'll be in the next fiscal year. So what our internal thoughts are, and I haven't put this in a staff report or anything of that nature yet, is to re-adopt the plan as is and then completely redo the plan next year, in the next fiscal year, and just meet our statutory legal requirements that we have to...
By the end of June?
Yes. And then, we have 75,000, I think, set aside for a new plan at this time, and we may have to add a little bit to it, just depending, but our thinking is, we do need a complete rewrite, and that's how we're leaning as far as staff at this time. Of course, when we have a new director, that may change, but in discussions with the city manager, that's the way we're leaning at this time.
So does that mean that we're not doing any tweaks, i.e. the parking at this time?
No, we could still do that.
Okay.
That could still be an amendment, a change, you know, to the ordinance. That doesn't have to be, that's not a total redo. In other words, we could do this, and then we could still have time, I believe, to actually, after we change that, to re-propose, that we adopt what's there. And the comprehensive plan and the ordinance are actually two different things, but they refer to one another. They certainly, you know, work together.
They need to dovetail with each other.
Of course, of course.
So are you ready for any questions about parking?
Yes, sure.
In addition to your study of requirements, whether it be by seats or square feet or whatever, did you do any study as far as the standard sizes for parking stalls?
There's some cities that have, for Bowling Green, for example, it's nine feet all across the board. Some cities have a combination of nine and 10. I believe Covington's a combination of nine and 10 feet, depending on use. Personally, I do believe we need to leave it at nine and 10, because it, like, daycares, when you're getting kids in and out of the car, and you're trying to pack in bags, I think that extra foot does make quite a bit of difference.
Well, in particular, if you're going to change from the one per 30 to maybe one to 100 or something like that, I think the 10 is a good number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I know some municipalities have a different, depending on the classification of the business, compact car size and regular size, and I didn't know if we were, and then they have a formula for how many you can have, and then it gets into your overall square footage as you provide those spots. I don't know if we wanted to go that far deep into it, or...
I didn't go that deep into it. I looked at just overall how many is required and what their formula was.
Okay.
But why not?
It sounds like, though, that it's fairly simple for the other municipalities that we compare ourselves to, so therefore, we should keep it simple.
Well, I mean, in our minimum size that we have in our ordinance, which I printed, employee parking is nine by 18 feet, of course, 18 feet is standard for length. Public parking is 10 by 18 feet, which includes supermarkets, convenience stores, takeout restaurants, which we're now allowing them to do nine instead of 10. And then garage parking, parking garage is eight foot, eight inches, which, if you've been to some parking garages in this community...
And that's where you see the compact cars quite a bit.
Exactly. And that's where, that's where they really get tight. So, and then parallel parking, of course, is 10 by 24, so, anyway.
And just along with that, how does handicap parking fit in with that? Because that whole scenario has changed.
That's actually regulated by federal law. You have to have a, for a van, which is your very first space that you have to have, is eight-foot van space and eight-foot unloading space, and then is every six spaces above 25, then you have to have, one of those handicap spaces has to be van-accessible.
Right. 16 by 18 feet for the first space, and then...
16 by eight, or 16 by 18?
18.
I'm sorry, 16 by 18, not by 18. 18 is the standard length for all parking space. Well, I mean, it is here, which is that one. So, and one out of every six handicap spaces or fraction thereof must be van-accessible. In other words, they have to be 16 by 18.
I do think it would be a good idea to include us looking at, like, compact cars, because this is a five-year plan that probably won't be visited again for another five years, and thinking forward might be a good idea.
Well, I think we will, definitely. I think that what he's talking about is approving the comprehensive plan just so that we're in compliance by the end of June, and then going back, and this is a section we would definitely take a look at.
Yeah, I meant that.
Josh, what do you think the immediate effects of, say, changing the per-square footage or per-seat requirement, minimum parking requirement would be?
It would definitely be developer-friendly. If anybody else wants to come in Paducah, they wouldn't have to buy as much land. And in fact, I talked to another restaurant today that we don't have, that we're hoping to get here. Of course, they wouldn't have to buy as much property, so they can subdivide a smaller lot, and then existing... lot, and then existing property owners could carve a space out, which would create infill development instead of more sprawl.
And the comparison is pretty substantial.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's, it's pretty obvious looking across this that Paducah is, is the most restrictive out of all our comparable cities in almost every respect, save for a few exceptions, and I really hate to see that.
Yeah.
Because I don't think it's necessarily held us back to this point, because we're doing pretty, pretty well, economically it seems, but...
And we are one of the number-one quick food places in the country.
Yeah, but I certainly don't want to see us in any particular situation lose out on an economic opportunity, because our parking requirements are too restrictive. So, I would love to see, as soon as possible, something on the agenda from this commission to at least make us as more competitive with other cities.
Right.
If that is something that you feel comfortable with, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I agree with Mr. Bradford in the fact that I don't see that it's restricted us any, but I think all the developers know they could request a waiver also, but I mean, being a little bit more restrictive. I think we're talking about feet, they don't have to purchase more property, we're talking about acre, we're talking about feet, so.
Right.
It's public-friendly too, to have more parking, where people don't have to drive around wherever. I have some concerns about some parking. We, now, we pay for paying park and all that stuff, where we predicted a couple of years ago that this, that would happen, if the growth was sustained economically, and, you know, a little bit restrictive is good for the public, so that they have appropriate parking for families, out there. I mean, I don't want us to be way out, but if they, if everybody knows that they have a way to request a waiver, we have to look at both sides, development, but family. I've been to places where you can't find a parking place for miles, and that's not good either.
For your discussion, for what you're talking about, getting more average, I did include some, the average numbers, not including Paducah back here, of what everybody else is, and that's where we found out we is more restrictive.
Or better.
Not we're restricted, we're better.
Yes.
I guess if we wanted to, if you are interested in changing anything in the ordinance, does anyone have any suggestions on what you'd like to see it changed to?
Well, can I ask Josh a question?
Sure.
Is there anything happening now that would deter someone from coming to Paducah that a change like this should be imminent? I mean, should we, you understand my question?
Yeah, there's nothing that I'm aware of at this time.
I'd hate for somebody not to come here, because we didn't act quickly, you know, for something.
Right. Nothing that I'm aware of, Ms. Schramke. A little bit of history that I had done on this as well, and the very first parking requirements were adopted in nineteen seventy-six. They were readopted on May nineteenth, nineteen ninety-two, which looks exactly like we have now. So, it took sixteen years for the first major change, and we're already twenty-five years in before, and we haven't changed them largely, so we're, they're getting pretty dated in that aspect.
Well, and another thing I think that you have to consider is that people are very busy, they're very mobile. It's very rare for people to go and sit down and eat, there's a lot of carryout that goes on, at least there is at my house, and I suspect there is at a lot of other houses. So, it's a changing environment as far as parking is concerned.
Well, certainly, the average vehicle size has, I would think, has increased.
I don't know. You think about some Cadillacs and some of the bigger cars, that there were Buicks and that kind of thing, that were much bigger in seventy-six.
But some of the smaller cars were much smaller, so I'd be interested, we don't need to go without route, but there's certainly more pickup trucks and SUVs now, so therefore, without any fact to go on, I do believe though, that average size of vehicle has increased.
We sell more pickups than SUVs.
See, oh, there's...
Here's our next one.
Well, the, the economic, I guess, or the restrictions that might cause some economic harm to me is only one factor. I'd like to encourage everybody to also keep in mind a land use perspective, because, for example, with our one per thirty square foot quick service restaurant requirement, that's about six, almost seven times as much as the city of Owensboro, so that means we require a lot more parking for fast food restaurants than Owensboro. Hence, whenever a fast food restaurant goes in, we have to use a lot more land per fast food restaurant, and this, this last parking requirement waiver that we had is a very good example of how we can use a lot of land for parking with a lot of parking already available. For example, the shopping center, look behind it, in the Gander Mountain Old Service Merchandise parking lot, there's about a thousand spots available right there next door. Granted, they can't use those, but if we didn't require quite as much parking, we might be able to create less sprawl.
Put another building there or something.
Yeah.
Well, and to, you know, you're talking about impervious surfaces that you're creating, again, that's a water issue, and so that's something that has to factor into it as well.
Yeah.
I'm all for congestion. It does create congestion.
It does, it does.
I think we would require less space for building, so, really wouldn't, land use space would be more congested, less parking, walk further, or create some safety. Unfriendly environment, so many families, and I think done well, creating an environment in many, many places, and it's, as I can tell, safe. And I'm not saying I'm more restrictive either, I mean, we're safe, safe, family-friendly, have enough parking place, makes it enjoyable afternoon, or basically. We have to balance it, I guess.
Well, you know, I asked a question of Josh, and perhaps I attracted that question to the wrong person. Maybe we should ask economic development about that. I mean, they talk to people all the time that are wanting to come to Paducah. Has it been an issue? Is it something that, you know, they have input on, that they could tell us what is the norm for what people are asking for? I think gathering information is a good idea before we make a final decision.
So, am I hearing that you all would rather leave it the way it is for right now, until we can do a little bit more, get a little bit more information? Is that where we're coming from? I mean, I'm looking for a consensus here.
That's where I'm at. I'd like to have more, I mean, the immediate, my knee-jerk reaction was, we're way out of bounds here, and so let's fix it quick, but I've had time to think about it, and I'd like to know more. Fix it right.
And the other part is, the one that we approved this evening, okay, if we change that, it's to their benefit. They can change it also. They can ask for, you know...
Theirs are great.
They can do what they want.
They're not us.
Yeah. I think we need more information. I'd like to hear from economic development, and I'd like for you to do a little bit more research on whether it should include compact cars, or, you know, what, what size are we talking about? I mean, I personally like ten-foot everywhere, but, you know, it might not be what it needs to be.
One other thing that I would like to mention to the commission as well, is we have had a lot to talk about stormwater lately with the con drive.
Yes.
In our zoning ordinance now for storage units, many storage units, those areas by ordinance have to be paved, creates more stormwater. I've been in, talking with the city engineer's office, what we would like to think about doing as well as not having to pave those, but down, put down a DGA or gravel surface, there's a different coefficient for runoff between grass, that gravel, and paved over. It would help, we feel it would help the city of Paducah stormwater somewhat, is if we allow developers to put gravel down instead of paving, because you're not having people all the time, that sort of thing. That's something else I would like to bring to the commission at the same time.
Well, I'm sure that's, that's only one of the items in the stormwater development that, you know, think changes that we'd like to see, but it's a good one, certainly a good one, and, and I can see that that's something that we really do need.
Yeah, that's the low-hanging fruit of that, that we can easily do.
Exactly. There are little more complicated things, I think, that we're going to run into, so...
You're talking just the storage.
Right, like many storage units.
The other part of that is maintenance.
Yeah, they would, they'd have to fill the potholes and all that good stuff.
Somewhere or another, we would have to enforce that gravel be maintained.
Yeah. Well, we have that in our ordinance now, Ms. Schramke, where our zoning ordinance is something to the effect of property owner shall maintain their lots with no potholes or something, there's some language in there. I don't remember it verbatim, but we have something similar.
With enforcement, of course.
That's the problem, is when you get to the enforcement.
I've actually had to send letters to TJ Maxx and different places in the past for that, so...
Did it work?
Yes.
Well, I think we have, does anyone have any more?
Yes, I'm just kind of curious. Again, I'm just getting this, your idea of waivers and pain, is that something needed? From a financial constraint for your offices and budgets as they are, should we be thinking in terms of when we get to the comprehensive plan of opportunities like that?
Oh, definitely.
Going forward, where we, not to hinder business in any way, but rather business that might be in place already, that would like to retrofit or retro, you know, like I was talking about, going back and there'd be a fee, I'm thinking fifty dollars or something, not a exorbitant fee.
Well, the fee could be based on what they want to do.
Yes, exactly. It's a flat fee, but based on what they want to do.
Yeah, two spaces, maybe fifty dollars, but a whole parking lot, let's talk about it.
It's a more progressive way of looking at dealing with this type of situation, in a way that can actually benefit the city.
Sure.
And I think the, if there were funds, if that was set up that way, it would probably go to most likely engineering for them to maintain...
I would say so.
And we can earmark it that way, or?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. It could be written in the ordinance that way. Absolutely. But, I mean, that would require, I mean, we would have to be, my first question when, when we were discussing this was, has this been tested yet? In other words, has it, has anybody said, oh, you know, has it gone before legal? Has it been a legal issue yet?
Even aesthetically, when I think of all of the asphalt, just when you gravel, you know, you got grass, aesthetically, it changes the view of our city, so, and we have an aesthetic, so, I think it's, it's helpful relief, but...
Agree.
Parking lot looks really neat, it looks clean, it's a nice surface, first of all.
And that's why I feel like we need to have the public giving us their input to, the business owners, the people who live around, you know, who are close to those facilities, because they have firsthand knowledge of what they see and what could affect the plan.
Recently, very much, they did something similar with, I think, Chad or something, the kids, in that area, they had dust all over, all the cars that traveled around there, plenty of dust.
Those large apartments next to me there, you know, there's a lot of gravel there. Are they eventually going to be all paved?
Yes, based on their site plan, it was going to be paved, yes. As far as I know, it still is.
Okay, I guess it's because they're still developing, I guess, is that why there's...
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're completely done or not yet, Ms. Schramke.
Any other discussion? Thanks you all for staying tonight, I appreciate that. I appreciate your input, too. Josh, I think you've taken notes on this?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We don't need one, we're just...
Well, we didn't take one earlier.
We just like to have it.
To adjourn?
Yeah.
Josh, remember red gravel.
I'm definitely red.